one nation, under God, indivisible, with a liberty and justice for all.
Pray, Father in heaven, again, we are grateful for the day that you've given to each of us to live. We pray, Lord, that in this day, we do things that honor and glorify you. Ask you, Lord, that you bless those who are sick in our community, those who have special needs. Pray, Lord, that you bless according to your will. I pray, Lord, that you would also comfort those who are grieving because of the passing of the loved ones today. The few, and we pray, Lord, that your Spirit would comfort their hearts. Now, Father, help us to conduct this meeting in order and properly. We pray this to Jesus.
Amen.
All right, roll call.
Alden Betts.
Here.
Alda Roman Dooray.
Present.
Aldman Gardner.
Here.
Aldman McCoy. Aldman McCoy is currently absent. Aldman Crooks.
Here.
The forum exists.
Okay. Our first item on our agenda is going to be a public hearing ordinance, amending the town budget for 2017-18 fiscal year. We'll open that meeting in a minute, but I would like to specify what this basically is doing. Losing the budgetary law requires that if you have on your general fund or your special revenue fund, if you have a variance of more than 5%, it requires an amending of your budget. And basically, that's basically what we're doing today. The requirement deals with just the general fund and the special revenue fund. That's required by the ordinance to be approved by. So, that's the ordinance we're discussing, and that's one that we have to comment, public comment, that we will close the public hearing and give more consideration to adopt the amending of the budget. So, at that time, we're here to motion we enter into a public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
Let's see.
Dooray.
Motion by Dooray, second by Garner, in favor.
Aye.
Okay, we're now in the public hearing. Any questions? Mr. Anger.
Father, I've got a number of questions, but I don't want to take up all the time of the hearing. But just basically, the summary that is on the budget for, the proposed amended budget. There, it all seems dependent upon what's going to happen on the 28th with the closing of the Project Blue deal. The 28th is two days before the end of the fiscal period. One day, which happens to be on Saturday where the bank is closed. Unless they're giving you something monetary at that time, it seems wrong to put it in this year's budget, but rather, it should go into next year's budget, just because of the time differential and the problem with trying to get monies in a fund that may be in the form of a check or whatever they pay you. But that pushes the budget in expenditures to $36,808,378. That is well above the biggest budget that the previous administration had. Well above it. There are interest for the beginning fund balance and the ending fund balance that represent $2.4 million. My question regarding that is, how much of that beginning and ending budget is required to be held or reserved or for whatever use it may be? How much is it? And is there not an overage that would allow you to pay off that loan this year, independent of Project Blue, and make whatever adjustments that you made for errors or whatever that were in the previous original budget? And if so, why not do that rather than depend upon the come? We've been told many, many times that Project Blue was right there on the closing time. We're close, we're close. Now, we're six days from it, and those six days leaves us just one day of banking activity to pay off the loan, and then to, dependent upon that money, and then to put that money in the bank so that these numbers will be accurate. I'm opposed to approving this budget because there are too many questions and ifs that could be wrong. And that leads me to the fact that we borrowed $7 million, or $700,000 recently for a last-minute payment of a bill that was due the very next day. This situation seems very similar to that. And I wonder, at that time, why not that $700,000 be drawn from whatever fund is holding that ending balance? I would think that, you know, you've got some leeway there about what you have to hold versus what you could draw from. So, my question is, where's that money? Where is the beginning and ending balances that every month we hear about, and then at the end of the budget year we hear about?
Okay, we did get your list, and I believe our CPA answered a lot of your questions already for you, Mr. Anger. I'm gonna let Deborah, if she wants to address it, then I'll follow up with these things.
Okay, I did get, I posed a series of questions several days ago, and Deborah was kind enough to answer them pretty well in depth. But it did lead to other questions, her answers did lead to other questions, so...
Well, the fund balance is not necessarily always the cash. I mean, it is all your assets and all your liabilities, the net of those two is kind of like equity. But, so that's what the fund balance, so it's not always that we have a lot of cash available. We do have the $2.3 million that's in the hydro, you know, reserve account. I guess like those are investments, that's invested in CDs and interest-bearing accounts at the bank. But there, you know, there's not a lot of extra cash to pay off the $2.5 million. So, we had to borrow $700,000 to pay a $900,000 hydro royalty payment, you know. So, until our royalty payment came in two weeks later, then we were able to have that money back in the account. But it's that, does that answer your question about the money not paying the bill?
No, my question is, of that reserve, and I'm gonna call it a reserve because I don't have any other term for it, but how much is cash? How much can you draw from that is not other forms of asset other than cash?
We just voted on that as far as what the requirement is. You know, the minimum is $1.98 million that you have to keep in there for two months of high utility, high royalty bills.
Yeah, I'm understanding the hydro fund requirement of a reserve.
That, yep.
Now, this fund with this proposal is added to by $2.4 million. And that should be what excess revenues that you receive this year, which should be in the form of cash or some...
That's correct. All right, well, what happens is, if we do, if the sale happens, which is all indications that we have, is it supposed to happen on the 28th, which is $4 million. We'll take the $4 million, and the very next day, we'll pay the $2.5 off at the bank. So, that'll leave $1.5 left that will not be available for appropriate, because it won't be appropriated for any type of expense. So, it will be put into an account and used for whatever purposes that the board agrees to use it for, because it's not been appropriated for anything. So, we don't foresee any reason why you couldn't go to the bank to do it. But if something happens that didn't fall until the last day of the month and we didn't get to the bank, if we have a deed that shows that they are obligated to pay that money to us, then that is changing the title of the property over to the new purchaser or new owner. That is a binding agreement whereby if we don't have the actual dollars in the bank at that time, you know, we should have them there shortly after. It would be a receivable if it's not in the bank, and a payable on the loan if it was made shortly thereafter.
Well, your answer is what I'm leading up to. It sounds like that you would not be able to actually use any money if the sale does not pass, and even if it does, until some days after that as receivables if they fail to pay it.
That's right.
Wouldn't it be more simple to withhold your budget revision this time for this year, which is totally dependent upon receiving that money?
Right, well, we have a letter of misunderstanding that they're pretty much, and they're telling us that it's going to happen. It's just a projection of where we think we're going to be. And it is a document that tells us, you know, that they agree that they're going to do this, and all this is going to happen. But is it the deed? No, it's not, but it is.
Well, and if they fail to do it, like you say, and it's receivable, then that receivables is next year's situation.
Right, and if they fail to do it, if they fail to do it and it doesn't happen this year, well, our budget will be off, but it's not part of the 5% that the legislative auditor or that the auditors, when they come in and do, they're only looking at the general fund and the special revenue fund. So, it doesn't really affect that amount that has to be approved or the 5. It'll just be, it didn't happen.
Okay, I'm asking you to clarify, of the beginning and ending balances, how much of it is cash? How much of it is other things? And if you've got to hold cash as a reserve, I know you can't touch that, but it seems to me that our increased revenue that is projected here is well enough, well, to take care of the pretty well bulk of that loan payoff.
It would be, but if it doesn't happen, and you add before and you take, you subtract the $4 million off, and you add back the $2.5 that we're saying that we wouldn't be able to pay that debt, we would only have, because we wouldn't have the $4 million to pay the debt. We wouldn't have the $900,000.
And I understand that, if it does not happen, if it does not happen, how much cash does this town have in these funds? How much cash? Is it zero?
No, it's not.
All right, is it millions of dollars?
Well, we have the, if you're talking about fund-wise or budget-wise, all funds, say, all funds, we've got $2.3 million of the hydro, we've got another $100,000.
The hydro is cannot be touched, though.
I know, it's real tight, I'm not gonna lie. There's not a lot of cash, there's definitely no cash to pay the balance off, the $2.5 million balance.
The point I'm trying to make is, I've asked a question that I'm not really getting answered to. I would like an answer to how much of our continuing balance in all funds does the city have to utilize for whatever situation it needs? Simply by taking it out of that fund, you transfer out of the funds all the time, transfer out of that fund, and end up this year with a lower ending balance than you expected simply because you've utilized cash to take care of a problem condition. I feel like, over the period of time that we've been promised that Project Blue is right there, going to be done, that this could be also another wrong situation. And it's a risk.
I appreciate your concern, and I do. We've been given a closing date, and we'll address that. If it doesn't close, then you can come back in the next meeting and say, "I told you so." So, and we'll address that. But as far as fund accounting, do you understand fund accounting? Do you understand it?
Well, I think I understand enough to have asked the question I've asked.
All right, well, let me...
I don't know the cash balances right off, I can't tell you.
For example, and I saw you answered some of your questions on things where you're showing that this administration might have expenses or something the next year. And I don't want to get off on the next year's budget at all, because we got this business to take care of here. But when you address, for example, the expenses are higher another $3 million, well, that's, you know, tell the cost of looking at revenues, and you'll see your revenues increased by that because any time that you've got something that's been allocated, for example, Heather Taylor, the port's going to take so much money to be what we think's going to be used this year, and we've got to show that as a revenue coming in on the top line on revenue. Also, you expense it out on the bottom, okay? It's not real money yet until you actually receive it or expense it out. It's in there like it's in, it's in your budget, okay? It's appropriated, that's what gives us the authority to be able to write checks as the port's being filled, instead of coming every time we have to write a check, calling up the audit and saying, "Hey, can I write a check to pay the contractor at the port?" This is what this budget's doing. It's strictly an instrument that we use and we can operate the town. And the fund accounting, the general fund does not make money other than from the things that we have, which are very limited as far as applicable tax. We have our occupational license things, and those are monies that come into that fund, okay? Like, those monies come in, they're deposited at the bank, they're tracked in a fund, okay? There is a cash, there's deposit balances, and there's money market balances, there's investment balances, which I would say probably are somewhere between, you know, also, there's monies in reserves for utilities, it's required, you can't touch that. That's a requirement, you can't touch those funds. But if you include all those, if you're accounting deposits as cash, which on a normal cash basis counting, you count cash, or deposits as cash. But these are in funds, these are in different funds, and they transfer in and out. For example, as we take care of these expenses out of the general fund, we may pull out of the enterprise fund, which is where the money's made, to put in that fund to fund paying those checks out of that. That's how it's tracked, that's how it's kept up with. That's required by state law.
And I've understood every bit of that, and the budget reflects that. What the budget does not reflect is how much, every year, every month, of the balance of all of these funds that you've got is actually cash.
It does, on the balance sheet. I show that every month in the financials on the balance sheet. It shows cash, it does, that is cash.
Well...
On the balance sheet. The balance sheet's not being budgeted, it's just the P and L.
And how much is that?
How much is it?
Now...
At this moment in time, I don't, I'll have to go look it up. I don't keep up with the cash every day. So, I mean, it could be, well, like he said, there is a deposit account that's strictly for your utility deposits, it's got $360,000 something thousand in it. The sales tax fund has $250,000, say. There's another fund for the debt sinking fund that I'm putting money in to cover this complex debt here, it's got $150,000. There is money in these funds or accounts, but, you know, money's going in and out all the time.
Well, and I know that, and my question is, why not take some of that overage?
Well, if we had overage...
You're telling me there's no balance of cash?
I just said that we have some cash, but we don't have lots of cash.
Well, then transfer it and solve the problem for the two days that you've got to work with, based on what you...
Oh, to pay the debt, I got you.
What you expect to come. Put it in next year's budget. Does it, the expenditure that you would make to close out that loan this year, do that out of the excess cash that you...
Well, we don't, if we take that out, we have to get permission from the board.
That board can do that right now.
Yeah, but I don't know if they want to, I don't know.
Ray, to pay that much cash, you would have to go into your reserve. You can't do that. We've got reserve, it's required, and we set.
The only reserve that I know about, and I believe that the public may know about, is the $2.3 million for the hydro electric fund.
That's the reserve.
And where is the $2.5 million payoff of the loan that comes from?
I'm asking, do you have it available? If not...
We do not have that much cash available to pay off the loan. Plain and simple answer is no, not unless you went into your reserve.
And at this day and time, you do not have the money in hand to pay off the loan based on your proposing this new budget.
Because it was supposed to come from the sale.
We've explained that, Ray, the process. We're closing that Thursday, okay? Heather, if you want to address it.
You say that, you said on April 30th, I believe it was, by radio, that it was a done deal.
That's right.
It was not a done deal then?
We talked with USDA, we talked with everybody involved, and closing agent, we've also talked to attorneys, they think it's supposed to be closed on the 28th, Ray. Again, like I said earlier, I mean, we could sit and talk all day. I mean, we got, we got action to take here.
And I didn't want to take up your time, but I do want to pose a question.
May I say something?
Sure.
Ray, Ray, you being an instructionist, these people, they have a floating balance at all times. Anytime you run a business, you never have a specific amount of money. It's a floating amount of money. And these people have given you their best answer, and you don't want to hear it.
No, I don't, I want an answer.
They tried to answer you, it's a floating balance.
I understand that it's a floating balance.
Okay, you're not going to listen, I can see that.
And it changes throughout, I understand that, Bill. But what I do not understand is why you don't know or you can't answer the question of how much of that floating balance right now is cash?
It's cash, we have, we know the cash, but we can't, it's not available to spend on a $2.5 million loan.
Why?
Because it's the royalty, it's got the royalty.
Can I ask you, can I say something?
It's all in the result, in the hydro royalty fund?
$2.3 of it is.
$2.3 million from $26 million leaves a pretty big figure. And I understand the floating balance thing. I've run businesses before with much smaller budgets than this one guy. I'm simply looking for an alternative to us betting on the come and taking a risk that can be delayed for two days. And you could amend this budget and put it in the next budget hearing.
Not just being compliant, Ray, we gotta take action on this, today, for the year.
Okay, so you don't want to take the hickey from the legislative auditor, you might have a red flag there by it being what it is. So, you got amended anyway.
You got amended.
Why not amend it, taking into account that you do have cash somewhere that you could transfer, and your board will vote on doing that?
You don't, Ray, you don't have that much cash unless you go into your reserve. You do not have, there's not $2.5, there's not $4 million sitting in the account to pay off that loan.
All it would take is $2.5 million. And you're showing an overage this year of $2.4 million.
I was just saying, I was thinking, he is thinking, what can you actually grab?
Yeah, what can you grab?
What can you take as an extra cash if the city has available?
Or for that matter, why just leave it on the existing budget and pay it two days later out of next year's budget?
Look, we're here to amend this budget, and I appreciate the conversation. If you're welcome after this, we'll sit down with you if you want to visit with us, Will.
Buzz, I've been to your office four times on other situations. This is a public hearing to have the public express concerns to you about amending this budget. I have many concerns. I have a solution, I think.
Which was not to amend it?
No. My solution is to pay off the loan, amend it, change their budget to take care of paying off, or pay it off next time, but do it out of possible funds that you've got, an overage out of this floating balance thing. It's hard for me to understand how you can increase that floating budget by $2.4 million.
And I appreciate, I appreciate your comments, and anybody else want?
Do I get an answer to that ever?
Well, Ray, we've answered your question.
No, you haven't.
That's like the day you came around, I spent three hours with you, rode around with Mark Moros, and you...
You spent three hours with me, you told me things that did not happen, that do not happen.
Okay, we're getting off track, let's get up back on business. Anybody else out there have comments on amending the budget? Any comments? Okay, I hear most of the public closing, public hearing.
I'll make the motion.
Hold the paper, I want Dooray to go here a second. Second by Alden Betts, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now, item number two, with more consideration to adopt the ordinance amending our town budget for 2017-18 fiscal year. And discussion amongst the board. Any questions?
He knows, go ahead.
They quit.
Go ahead.
All right, my question, I guess, is back to, pretty much, I'm not trying to go off of what Ray says, but it's gonna be similar ideas or something. Our budget shows $158 estimate dollars that has been paid by Project Blue. But in actuality, it shows about an estimate of $680,000 included in the budget. Is that normal? And my questions are gonna be, I guess, strictly to depth.
According to General Accepted Accounting Principles, GAAP, and this is what I do as a modified accrual accounting, because the auditors, when they come, they're going to do the final accrual and, you know, finish the report. But I do, and I did accrue that amount in the budget, and that was through April. We have May and June left to accrue, so that number is going to increase. And it wasn't in the budget, because at that time, we thought that Project Blue was going to happen. We didn't know it was going to go an additional two months after that. So, there is additional revenue that can be received. And the only thing that we have as a legal document, that's a binding document, we don't know for certain if they were to default on this and not go through with it, would we be able to go after them? Absolutely, you know, to collect that money. But whether we collect it or not, I have no idea. I don't know how the laws are to collect it. But it is something that we have an agreement to collect, and I felt like it was important to put it in there and to accrue for it this year. If it turns out otherwise, then, you know, if later on, when the auditors come and they decide, well, it's not collectible, then they can reverse it out. But it's still not part of what you're trying to do today, which is just the general fund and the special revenue funds to approve it.
That's what I'm gonna keep, right?
But it is for your understanding.
What we're trying to do, this amendment is strictly just getting the town in compliance with state law, and that's it.
Well, wait, wait just a minute now. Yes, amended budget is based on those funds. However, the role of the alderman is not just to look at those funds. It's to make sure that the budget that you presented yourself in its entirety was followed throughout the year. So, while we only have to amend on those certain funds to be in compliance with the auditors, this meeting is not just to discuss those funds, because the aldermen do have the right to respond and ask questions on everything within the budget. What we're voting on may be only on those funds. It may only be required as a result of those funds. However, any budgetary question should be acceptable and answered in this meeting, because that is the function of an alderman, is to make certain, again, that the budget you presented at the beginning of the fiscal year was adhered to as best it could have been budget-wise.
And let me address that, and you're right, and it has been. And that's why we do reporting on a monthly basis, and you're good to know where you stand. You give them a side-by-side comparison on what was budgeted, what was spent, and what you think is going to wind up being acted. I mean, that's given to you each month. Now, there's no way for us to tell you exactly. Everybody will tell you in a municipality, there's going to be a month, a two-month lag before you have the final information on it. And that's, I mean, that's standard. I mean, Alda Betts will tell you probably in their municipality, they'll probably be a little bit round and monster, maybe a little behind there. Of course, they have a whole staff working, I think, keeping up, and they handle it a little bit different than what we do. However, yes, that's, you do have that ability every month to talk about that. Deborah, when she goes over her financial, if it's not something on agenda, Alden, when it's financial, you got a question on budget, or the line, Alden, you know, Mark or Lee or Mark, please, Mark, City Hall, anybody that's doing something that's not, look like it's kind of getting out of the line, you know, you have every right to ask, "Well, hey, why didn't run up?" And you have that opportunity. But for today's discussion, we're strictly wanting to go over, and I'd be glad to read the ordinance. I mean, what we're looking at as far as this is strictly presenting the GES in compliance. So, we will find, and this is something the state law requires us to do it, and we followed the steps to do it. It's never been done like this in the past, but the legislative auditor were following their best practice in what they set forth as far as having a budget ordinance, an agreement, a document to have, a valid legal document to record and file. And this is going to keep us in compliance. Now, the budget questions next week, when we talk about the new coming budget, that's when we need to have discussions, with Mr. Anger or anybody. that's when we need to have discussions, if there ain't work, or if anybody else wants to have, as far as on this next year's budget. This is done, this is basically a done deal. As far as what we spent, we're at the end of it. This is strictly to get us in compliance, so it will not be a finding against the town. That's true, I'm just saying, again, and you're welcome to talk about whatever you want to, as far as, I mean, I think that could be something done in a, in a, you know, and, and maybe not, and then you can bring it up in any kind of financial thing, but discuss whatever on individual items that might be, somebody might be out. Discuss with that particular department head, we do anyway. You know, we don't do it, look at it when we were preparing our budget, look at it on the individual basis, what happened here? You know, Mark this year had spent $40,000 putting new sediment in our, our sediment bed for our water, you know, those things is, you wouldn't know. But, you know, hey, I need, I gotta do this, or else we can't process water.
I need to say one thing, too. You know, as far as the appropriation of the sale of the Fruit of the Loom building, is that, that we are asking too, for y'all's approval at today's meeting, in my opinion, to, to use the proceeds to pay the debt off. I would think that would be something that you would want to, to do, and it is included in the budget, and it is a overall budget. So in my, I do think that they should be able to, um, you know, have that opportunity to express their...
On whether or not to pay the loan off, I would think that they are on the way to pay the loan out of the proceeds.
Well, I'm really interested in any of your comments on the budget myself, too, even as it is. Because I gotta know and learn what is that y'all are expecting, or maybe I can share what I know about the budget to y'all. But, you know, but from what he's trying to do today, I understand that, too.
My concerns are that, like you said, like, like Ray was saying, we amending this budget at this point, but maybe it should be amended as per item that we need to amend it on. Instead of holding it till the end of the year, you know, we need to amend something and take it into consideration at that point.
It's only after it's the 5% deal, and that's when, sometimes it's not till the end of the year that you know that you've exceeded the 5%, although during the year, we brought things to your attention, and we got your vote on a lot of the different things, and maybe there were some errors on my part, which is really what's caused the 5% on the general fund anyway, with the police departments paying and the fire departments paying.
But this keeps us in line as to per what we amended, not what they overspent. Do you see what I'm saying? They, what was overspent due to the fact that we didn't amend, but there's things in this budget we have to amend, not because we approved everything. There's things that are overspent as per employee overtime on certain things that I've discussed with Mayor Craft that are out of compliance, which I could have addressed that in every month meeting. But I said, huh?
I, I, I don't know, I'm gonna have to just let you continue to talk.
But you know what I'm talking about, too. And I think there's several other people in here that know what I'm talking about, about things that are overspent, that have been discussed, that haven't been changed. I'm not gonna even name names right now, because I'm gonna deal with that after this meeting. But there's things that are not done that are putting us out of compliance. It may not be the 5% because of the big item, but there are certain things, little things mount to big things that put you out of that 5%, right?
And we try to let you know what we know, but if you know something else, then you need to let us know, so that we can see what you...
I've discussed this several times.
I'm jealous, Tommy.
No, I'm not, I'm dealing with this bill as I was, and I'm dealing with it in a situation, because when I get through, I'm gonna ask the state of Mayor Craft him. Because there are certain things, but this is just a little thing. But little things, you know, pennies mount to dollars, dollars mount to big dollars. Well, that's what takes, that's what's taking place. That's not being, that's part of this amended budget, yes, and that's what we need to be sure we watch close. And it may be needing to be addressed each month, which I think in this new budget, if we might approve or might not approve, I think it'll be a little more watch, watching on it than what we have in this budget. So that's, that's why I'm saying we need to definitely look at the little thing and discuss the little thing, not just the big things that put us over 5%. Because it all is money. 1%, 2%, 5%, 4%, 5% above budget, but wouldn't it be nice to be under budget?
If, if...
And be able to pay off the debt, and the main thing is to lower our utility.
I agree.
Which is what we were supposed to have, but I ain't seen it yet. So...
Wait, you, you did?
Uh, wait, Buzz, I'm talking.
All right, go ahead.
So that's where I'm at. So I'm just saying, I'm speaking my mind as to where we're at in this budget situation and amending the budget, because I feel like it's our responsibility and our only responsibility in a lot of cases, not only, but our major responsibility is budget. So, yes, there are things that are discussed, but changes are not made. And that's little things that amount to big things, and that's all I can say.
All right, number one, utilities. I don't know how many times we've got to say this note to me, that I made a change back in September 2016 that took 2.1 million dollars out of utility bills that was going to our, our customers, all of them. 2.1 million, so don't tell me no more I didn't cut money, okay? I don't hear that no more from anybody. Have we cut rates? No, we have not cut rates. But I did cut a calculation into our power cost adjustment that saved everybody in town. 2.1 million dollars on our electricity costs, that's not showing up in income in this town, okay? I just want to get that out there, please, I hope everybody takes note of that. I cut costs, not a rate. The rate's been breaking through with public company, we're, we're gonna finish. But anyway, only other things, we meet monthly to talk about these things as far, I want y'all to watch the budget, but I will, I wish you'd come in more. I, I, I won't go there, I wish you'd come in and sit, sit down and talk. I do. I really do. And I won't go there, but anyway.
But don't address me, please, don't look at me.
No, I'm saying, I, I mean...
That's not the way to do it, Buzz.
I know.
Don't take it personal, I'm told, okay?
I'm just, but...
Look out there, talk to the public.
Okay, okay, and the public's welcome to come in as well.
But don't look at me.
Well, I'm, I'm looking at everybody, everybody's welcome to come in. Okay, now, any more questions on, on the ordinance?
Yes, um, just, just to clarify something you said, though. While you may have reduced the static cost factor, you may have saved. The power cost adjustment, which I have a record of all the way back to 2014, is, is higher than it has ever been. I understand that that is because of additional things that were added into the power cost adjustment, which were not decisions that you made.
Correct.
But when saving, I've saved the residents 2.5 million, they're not seeing that when they pay their bill, because the power cost adjustment that they received from the day we took office has been more, or perhaps in some cases slightly, ever so slightly less than what it was prior to us taking office. So while there may have been a reduction because of decisions that you made, that is not reflected in the bills that the residents receive, and they do not feel that savings. Just as a point of clarification. Well, you also said, when we discussed, you, you brought to the attention, we're talking about, we have to do this because we have to be in compliance. We have to be in compliance, because, heaven forbid, we're not. You also said earlier in this fiscal year that the aldermen were out of compliance because we had yet to set a utility rate. Since that time, monthly, I've requested to be on the agenda to do just that. So as we move into the fiscal year, we're already gonna have a finding on our audit, because we still don't have that rate in place, simply because you don't agree with what rate we're wanting to discuss. So I point that out just to say that it's this, this situation, this statement is being made time and time again, that this must be done, or we will not be in compliance, when you yourself are allowing us to not be within compliance on other issues based on your amendment. So, yes, in order to be in compliance with that 5% rule, an amended ordinance should be passed. But it is not a requirement that it be done. The only thing that happens if it is not done is we get yet another finding on an audit. It's not a fine associated with it, it's not the end of the world, it's not gonna crumble down around us, which is what I feel like you're portraying to the public, is that this is law that it must be done. Yeah, that's a law that must be done, but it's not a law that carries a fine or carries malfeasance in office for any member of the board or the administration. It's something that is required to be done as is a utility rate ordinance, which we have yet to put in place, because it's not allowed on the agenda.
I, I'll just ask you a question, what, what rate does your ordinance, which I've not seen, which you want to put out there? What, what does it address, what rate, utility rate, I mean, electric rate?
All of it.
All of it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I'd like to see it.
Okay.
Okay. I have never seen it, I've never been, I've never been presented with it, but...
No, you've never been presented with it?
I've, I've been told it was just addressed as electric rate.
Who told you that? Because that's the first time you've ever asked me that question.
I mean, I would think, being the mayor, that you would want to discuss and hand me an ordinance that you want to propose, but that's gonna get there, look, let's, let's finish our business at hand, 'cause we, we talked about that last, we, we're gonna address that. However, now, any more questions on the amendment of this, of this budget, any more questions?
Only, when I looked at the budgeted, the adopted budgeted, and the proposed amended, and I looked at expenditure, expenditures only, and I removed from that port access, which we really have no control over what they spend, and I removed from that the Concordia Bank line of credit, okay? I showed that we will be amending our expenditures up, meaning we have spent more than what was budgeted, 1.1 million dollars.
Um, I'm not showing that, so we'll have to get together on that, because I'm showing also, I took the original 2018 budget and the projected 2018 budget, and took the variance of total revenues and personal services, materials and supplies, and other services and charges, capital outlay, debt service, and I've got a reason for every one of them. So, you know, I can either give you this, that might be the problem, but I may not have the exact amount, let's see, because I don't have them added up as far as the total of the variances. But I am showing a unfavorable variance from personal services of 415,000. That's due to the increase in payroll for the police department and the fire department, which was...
Which was due to accounting error and denied additional personnel...
That's correct.
Okay.
That was my fault, I take full responsibility.
What was the number again, I'm sorry?
Well, 192,000 for the police department and 190 increase in fire department, or, the variance is 415,678 unfavorable.
Okay.
Then there's an unfavorable materials and supplies variance of 597,900. That's due primarily due to the increase in gas and electric power cost of 573,000, and other materials and supplies in the utility fund, uh, that caused the increase. But what happened is, is that we have now started, uh, selling gas to BASF, which is a tremendous small amount of gas, so that's almost, well, it's only started in April, April, May, July. So that's four months of increase in that cost, and also the electric cost was 573,000 dollars, uh, more than budgeted, is what I'm showing for that variance. So that's about a 900,000 unfavorable, but under other services and charges, I show 414,000 favorable variance, and that's due to decrease in the engineering fees, professional fees, and the capital projects fund, and also a decrease of 53,000 in the utility department. But since we're not doing the, the project didn't get completed as we thought, you know, so that's, was a savings in our, um, expenses for the engineering cost. And also on the capital outlay, I'm showing a favorable 3.9 million dollar expenditure, which is because the port project didn't happen as expected, so most of that is due to the port.
Right, that's what I said, I took the port out.
Took it out, okay. So the debt service is, uh, we're showing, instead of paying down the 1.2 million that we originally projected, we are amending the budget for the 2.5. So that difference between the 2.5 and the 1.2 with the 1.3 unfavorable variance, so...
I removed that from my count.
So you do that. So mine are like, if it's just personal services, materials and supplies, then we're talking about probably a 600,000 altogether unfavorable variance, and that would be for the, uh, is what I'm showing on my calculations.
Okay, we need to compare, because I add them up just as you, just as you said, and it's 1.172.
Oh, the ones that I gave?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so I show a unfavorable personal su, uh, um, supplies, services of 415, a unfavorable of materials and supplies of 597, a favorable other services and charges of 414. And you said you took out debt service and capital outlay. So to me, that's, um, probably a 600,000 unfavorable. So we're not quite tied.
Yeah, we'll have to, we'll have to look at that together. Because I broke it down by department expenditures only.
Okay, well, I, but I did look at them, okay, we can do that.
To the end of, like, for example, you said that there was a $40,000 necessary charge that was an emergency necessary charge.
For those, the hospital baskets?
Well, for, he said something about sediment in the, in the water treatment.
Oh, yeah, there was one.
Right, uh, which, that's an emergency necessary expense, has to be done, wouldn't want to not do it.
Right.
Don't take that from me using that as an example.
Right.
Um, in the budget process, while we're required to do it at the end of the year, given that 5% variance, that is not the only time that it can be done. And I think what Alderman Probst was talking about is, if we have a known expenditure that is an emergency expense, or a correction of a calculation, or something of that nature, or if the board votes for something that was not included in the mayor's original budget, those things can be voted to be approved, and a request that an amended budget be set to reflect what was voted on by the board. It's, it's required to be done at the end of the year if we have that 5% variance.
Right.
But we can do it monthly, if we would...
Amend the budget every month?
You can.
Yeah, I know, but that is...
Not that you would want to, but it can be done. There are, there are towns and municipalities in Louisiana that do it quarterly, so that we don't get to this end of the year crunch, where, like, our figures are different and we need more time to, to visit on it.
And that's why I tried to, or we did try to inform the, the board every month that the changes, and I gave y'all uh, during the months and time, a, a narrative of those changes, too. And y'all did get to vote on the police cars and...
Right, we did, absolutely.
Okay.
Um, I'm also concerned, I have just a couple of questions for, for Mr. Mayor. When you set your fiscal budget for the, the year that we're currently in, did you intend to offer the retention payment for the employees?
No.
We didn't include that if we had the money.
No, I didn't include it, did you intend to offer it to them, is the question?
At that time, no.
Okay. So, you know, one, because you were the one that proposed that we vote on, was why I was asking. So at the beginning of the fiscal year, you had no intention of giving that retention payment or incentive payment, as it was called in the previous year?
Because I didn't know if we'd have the money, if you don't have the money, I don't want to promise something you don't know you had the money for.
Okay. And so when we did vote upon it, y'all had determined, even given the fact that you were not receiving the projected revenues from Project Blue, that other revenues were lesser than expected, and y'all are calculating that on a monthly basis.
I think he was using the occupational license, is what he said at the time that he would use to pay back them. And Roger's the one who brought this up, too.
Right. Not that I'm against it, I voted for it, I'm just trying to figure out at what point, if you didn't intend at the beginning of the budget, when setting the budget, to include them, and you noticed on a monthly basis that revenues were not as expected, what you were receiving was not as expected, and expenditures were actually more than expected because of the same reason. How did you plan, when you brought it for the board for vote, what was your plan to pay for it?
I thought we'd have the income to do it, and we, and we had, well, of course, we wound up not, because we didn't fall through on, on Project Blue, I thought we'd have those incomes by then, but they didn't materialize, as, as with any...
Right, and almost the same question regarding the hydro rebates. At the beginning of the fiscal year, did you intend to give a rebate to the residents of Vidalia on hydro?
Absolutely.
But it was not included in the budget that you presented to us?
No.
How could you intend to give an amount of money that is that great and not budget for doing so?
We had no idea what it would be, because we weren't, that was the first time we had ever done it. And we didn't do it this time either, because we don't really know, and those dollars change. Yeah, we could estimate.
Right.
And I know you can, but, but we'll have to, you just, you have a thing about not amending the budget, I guess. But the budget can be amended, just like we said, and that's what we plan to do with any rebates that are given even in this next year, would be to amend the budget, get, go for approval, get the approval, set the amount, and then amend the budget for it. It's just a different way of looking at something.
Let me correct you.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
I do not have an issue with amending the budget.
Okay, good.
What I have an issue with is presenting a budget with plans in mind of what you're going to do and not including those plans within the budget you present. That's what I have a problem with. He didn't intend to give out the incentive payment, I mean, the retention payments to the employees, so it wasn't included. Understand.
Gotcha.
He did, however, intend to give out a rebate.
Right.
And you do have some historical data. I mean, you do projections on everything within this budget, right? Everything is a projection of what it could possibly be by the end of the year. Is that correct?
Possibly, yeah, but even right now, I don't care what cash would be. And we're doing that on cash and stuff, you know.
Right.
Right now, I could go do it, but I can't do it before this month, before the budget had to be done.
So, and I know that's coming for the next fiscal year, so we won't get into the next fiscal year, but my point is, when we're presented with a budget and we're told, this is what I'm presenting as mayor and administration, this is what I'm presenting to you, this is what I anticipate doing throughout this year. I understand it's a guide. We don't need to go into approval. We've gone through all of that, I get that. But failing to include plans that you intend to do skews your monthly expenditures. So you don't really know what you can spend every month if you don't have everything in that budget.
Well, as far as we know, in the budget changes statement, but as far as we know, at this point in time, when I did it, when we did it back in April and I put it on paper to make it work out, this is what we did. And I mentioned to Buzz about the rebates. I really don't think it needs or has to, it's a matter of perception of what you want. Either way, whether you put it in or whether you don't, it's set in there, we know that a million dollars of that excess, and this is for the 2019 budget that we're not looking at, is the hydro. And we're going to, you know, I'm sure they'll, y'all want to do the same thing. We don't know what that calculation will be. And my thing is, is since we don't know what it is, don't put it in there. That's just my theory. Whether it's right or wrong, it doesn't matter. It's whatever you, you know, whatever you think or y'all want, we'll do it.
Well, for the teachers, I intend to address our rates this year, but until we get a rate study and seriously do that, I mean, there's no way we can put that in a budget yet. I intend to pay another royalty payment. I intend to. And when we get to that point, when we get through the year, we're just like the process. I hope that's something we do every year at the same time. Every budget's going to have to be, I mean, I'm saying, I don't have a problem. You say you didn't have a problem amending budgets. I don't want to amend one every time we have something that could make me leave up that because Attorney Murray charges when he does these ordinances. Because when you're doing amendment, it requires orders. An ordinance document requires these things. I don't know why we wouldn't do it, maybe two or three months, perhaps, before the year to do this adjustment.
And then what if the rebate calculates to be something way less than what we get? Or way more, or just use the same amount?
If it's way less, we have more money to apply towards our debt. That's great. We should always be hoping that our expenses end up being less than what we project.
About the rebate. If the rebate is put into the budget, it would be really hard. And then it would may take away from y'all's responsibility to set it. We could say, oh, well, it's set in the budget at 300,000, even though there's 600. So we've got 300,000 that we can appropriate to pay the rebate, and therefore, that's all we're going to do. I mean, I'm just saying, that's just one way to look at it. And it could be more. And that's where y'all have that responsibility to decide. And so to me, I think, that's my theory. It doesn't have to be what yours is or anybody else's. Believe in places.
Okay. You just made a statement that you would rather have 300, but that's all we give. That's what an amended budget could be. If we decide to give 600,000 to the citizens, then we could. But you have nothing in there to give to the citizens. And we know we're going to give the citizens, as long as I'm on this board, we're going to give a rebate if I give the vote to support it. So we should put something. And again, let's get off of that because it's next year's budget. That's coming in the next week, which we, I get things. And so we'll discuss that later, but that's why the amended process, and that's the only reason I said it, because that's the amended process that we have to go through. And we can do that.
We should.
And that's all, again, is a perception of how you.
That's just one of those.
Well, I just think, and I understand your point, but I also think that when we're setting a budget, the priority for expenses should be the people. That should be priority number one. So we want to go ahead and put in what we're going to give to our employees to thank them for their service, if we intend to do that. We want to go in and put into our budget at the beginning what we plan to give back to the people. I think the priority should be how much of the townspeople's money are they going to give back? Because that's whose money it is. It's not ours or the towns, it's theirs. So failure to include them at the front end, failure to include them as priority number one in the beginning, and then allocating whatever funds you have left for everything else, that is the way I would think that the townspeople would appreciate if a budget was addressed. And if we don't get as much of a hydro rebate as we hoped we could, we could tell them, hey, look, we anticipated giving you this. This was what we wanted to give you. But these are our calculations, and unfortunately, this is what we have. But they're still made a priority. I know we can't get below from a turnover. I know we can't give them what's not there, but we can still make them a priority. And I only bring that up, and I know that those are discussions that will be held about the next fiscal year, but I only bring that up because I feel like, you know, one of the reasons that was said in the narrative that we have to amend the budget is because the Alderman voted to give the rebate. And that was, I don't want to say shocking to me, but the fact that it was not included in the original budget left me wondering if it was ever intended at the beginning of fiscal year to be given.
That's a little bit somebody's different opinion.
Right, and that's what it is. And that's why you have all of, you know, all of us here. It's different from looking at it.
I'm sorry if I offended any of the people in the community that aren't us.
I don't think anybody was offended by it. I was just curious about it. I do, actually, I think, I think Mr. Answorth made a good point. How can we? I know we have a receivables for the 4 million dollars. I know we have also receivables for the adjusted owed, the balance owed for leasing electricity. I know we, you know, we have those receivables. So I understand why those would need to be included in the budget. However, how can we include in this amended budget the promise to pay on monies that we only have a receivables for? Could we not take that 4 million and the, what is it, 438,000? The other receivables that we have from Blue?
It's more than that. It's the full amount, less the part that, it's.
The concession amount.
Whatever you call it.
Yeah.
Some people don't, I don't know what it is. It's just the amount that I don't have.
But could we, and wouldn't it be a little cleaner and a little safer if we're worried about an audit finding, to not include in the amended budget that we would pay off that debt? Not that we would not want to, because that is, you know, that is top priority. But not included in the amended, but included in the current fiscal year, which is one business day later.
This current, the next fiscal?
The next fiscal year. So that if, if, if it doesn't close, if, just a big if out there, we have said we're going to pay this money, but yet we're not able to pay this money back, we don't carry that negative into the new fiscal year.
Well, the contingency is, is we don't give the 4 million, then you wouldn't pay the 2.5. That is something that's kind of built in there. I didn't know if y'all understood that or not.
Well, yes.
But the thing is, is that there is a date that is set to do it this fiscal year. And to get it in this fiscal year, you know, which is what we all wanted to do, and to get the votes right, you know, we can put it in this fiscal year if it happens. If it don't, then we don't. But this amended budget is, this is just for, to help project where we think we're going to be at the end of the year over the whole company, over all the funds. Now, whether it happens or not, or if it don't happen, it won't be a terrible thing. It'll just go into next year. It will be terrible because we want it to happen this year.
Right.
And as far as I know, there's all indications that it will happen.
Right.
But there's always chance.
That's right. So why take the chance? Let me try to put it a little more simply. Why take the chance in showing it that we are definitely going to pay it? Why not amend the budget to include the receipt of the money? Let's say it does close, praise Jesus, it's here, and we can stop talking about it because that would be a glorious day.
Yes.
You know? Let's plan that we do receive it, but let's not plan that we pay it out until we know it's there. What would be wrong with doing it that way?
Well, it's strictly up to y'all. I really just thought that by having shown the proceeds, that we would show the debt being paid, that that's what we wanted to appropriate the money for, was to pay that debt, instead of having 4 million over here that we received. And I just thought that we want to pay that debt off as quickly as possible.
And we do want to do that, but we're talking the difference of a business day.
But I don't know why you would even think that otherwise. I'm totally.
If it doesn't close?
Yeah.
We've amended the budget to include the monies?
Yeah.
And to expand a portion of the money?
That's right. If we include the monies.
Right?
Right.
Then you're approving the budget with a contingency.
Right, we've had, we've had public comment.
Okay, we're approving the budget with a contingency.
Okay. This ordinance does not include industrial park fund where those monies were dealt.
Right. It's not, it's not, it's not part of what we.
Well, not part of what we're voting on on this right now.
Okay, so then what we can do then, by that theory, is we could adopt an amended budget that only addresses the 5% rule in just those funds. And everything else, we can show the uprages that exist there. Does the amended budget that you're presenting include amendments across the board of the budget?
Yeah, it does.
So we're not only.
Not in the ordinance, not in the ordinance. It's not in the ordinance.
But it's in this piece of paper that was given for viewing that we are basing our approval on.
Yeah.
Okay. So in this piece of paper that we're basing our approval on, we are discussing the entire budget and not just the things that are included in that ordinance. Okay, that's what I mean.
Okay, okay. Rearview, we'll, that's fine to discuss that. But I'm saying the vote is strictly on the general fund and the special revenue fund. Does not involve anything to do with Blue. If Blue doesn't happen, it doesn't affect if we're in compliance and it's not a finding.
Right.
Okay. So you're worried, mainly the worry is that we may or may not have a finding on the office. That's the worry.
I think that's pretty important, Sabrina.
No, it's very important.
I mean, why wouldn't, why wouldn't you can, when, it's right there that you can, with just a vote, a positive vote on this, keep your town in compliance.
Absolutely.
And not create a finding, which is one of the things, another campaign promised, I promised that I was trying to do away with, and we did a very good job, which I think the Council General asked about, is to not have a finding. I mean, to.
But we're going to have a, we're going to have an electrical ordinance finding.
Oh, I know.
A utility rate finding, we're going to have that?
I don't have that for here.
It's not something that they've ever.
That's not something that they, they don't intend to.
Oh, so, but when you said at that meeting that we were not in compliance.
We're not in compliance with, yeah, what I have on that, it's a different, it's a different.
Okay, just a point in place.
Okay.
But Sabrina, I'm trying to understand exactly why you would say, because I would see it, pay the debt like Mr. Answorth said versus showing the rep. But I, to me, I put both in there because you want to match, and you want to get the approval from the board to pay that debt if you're okay with today's budget or amended budget.
Right.
But if you don't want the revenue in there, or if you want the revenue, I wouldn't, and don't want the debt, I wouldn't put either one of them in there if that's what you prefer. But because we have, there's nothing wrong with putting it in there either.
Okay.
In my opinion, and we're hopeful that it's going to happen.
Right, oh, I have to.
Yeah, for all the right reasons.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
That's it. But if you, I would want to know what you thought then, why your thought would, of just putting the revenue in there and not to pay the debt. What was your reasoning? Or what was you thinking?
We have a piece of paper that promises that we're going to get paid, right? So that is now considered a receivable, right?
It's a memorandum of understanding, and it's not the deed of the actual document, but it is something that's pretty estimatable of what the revenue and expenses and all that's going to be.
Right, so we have it as, we don't have it as dollars in the budget, but we have it as a receivable, which a lot of the revenues are originally, right?
That's what they're using.
So it's a receivable.
If we don't need it, right.
That's right. That I have no problem putting in, and I think we should. I think absolutely we should. If we have a promise from them and we have, you know, the paperwork saying, yes, we're closing, you're going to get your money.
Gotcha.
It's my money and I want it now.
Right.
That should definitely be included.
Right.
My concern is showing that we are going, putting in a budget that is going to be given to the public, showing a reduction in expenditures by way of paying off a debt that we may or may not be able to pay if catastrophe strikes and we don't get that receivable.
Okay, so you're more like looking at total expenditures. You're afraid that that might look terrible if we don't get to pay the debt.
That's right.
But, but, but we got the money. Sure, if we're thinking that we're almost certain we're going to get the money, well, I think it's acceptable and probably more better to show it. If that's what y'all want to do, is to show it as an expense too. With the same theory, that you think you're going to receive it, you're almost 99% sure, then you're going to be that same assurance is going to be there when you're going to pay that debt. That's my theory.
Okay. And I understand, I mean, I get it, I 100% get what you're saying.
Okay.
No, no problem with it whatsoever.
That's it. And we want to improve the process of the budget and the meetings. And we've tried to do that this past year, and we want to continue to do that. And we need your help. And if you have questions during the year, come to us then. You know, we don't want to wait till the end. We don't, I don't either. It was a headache to try to get the numbers together, get the people's ideas together, and try to pull something to the end. And we've got to work on that process.
We do.
Anyway.
And we've met several times throughout.
Yes, we did.
We, I mean, we have. It's not that all of us aren't doing that. We've met, I've asked questions in meetings. I mean, I didn't come alive at this meeting.
Right.
Having those.
But we, but we, I have some ideas on how to do things a little differently for next year and how to, that's what we're hoping for, but, you know, but whatever it takes. And to get it done and get it done for the right reasons and the right way.
Okay.
Any other questions?